Hey. I'll see you in, see you around.
Hi.
Okay.
Anything new in the neighborhood?
Yeah, uh, number seventeen. Uh, I have one of these. That also has a lot of half stages on it. Can you get parts for this video? Yeah. She's not that old. Maybe a little bit is not. Oh, yeah. I just want to read that. There's one of those. Now, here's one. I'm gonna do that. That's good, sorry. This is a special. I can't even clear out this. Yeah. Right. It's not.
No.
Yeah. I just wanna say a lot of things.
Mary, are you here?
Yeah. 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 It's right up. They're a little more. Yeah. Certainly, um, referee. Yeah. Are you here? Uh, yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, we've been.
Hey, how are you? Good.
My name, uh...
Okay.
You know, we all set to go?
Yeah.
Yeah. The transportation is the margin.
One thirty dollars.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We all set?
Anyway. Fine.
But actually.
Do you want to do something?
Which one?
Seventeen. Is it here or what? I don't think it was. Sent to committee.
Is it?
Yeah, I think it's going to the ordinance.
Yeah. All right, all right. Yeah.
So they don't have to wait around till...
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah. You ask them.
Oh. We just make a motion. You don't have to use it.
Maybe he doesn't want to know.
It's not up there.
Huh?
It's not up there.
So they just do it?
Yeah.
These are here.
Yeah.
Don't have to hang around.
Come on! We're waiting for you. Yeah. I don't know why we're waiting for you, but... I don't know why we're waiting for you, but we are. Come on, let's get this going.
We call to order the city council for April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan. Leahy.
President.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Roman. Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
City of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Mr. President?
Yes, councilor.
Good evening. We make a motion to take item number seventeen out of order because we have a crowd of people here that...
Motion is to suspend rules and take up seventeen out of the order. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed?
Seventeen is a petition for zone change. Russell Terrace and South Street parcels one-one-zero-zero-zero-seven-two-one-one-one-zero-zero-zero-seven-three, one-one-two-zero-zero-zero-two-two-A and South Street one-one-two-zero-zero-zero-two-two.
Make a motion to have it go to committee?
Ordinance committee.
Motion is to receive and refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed?
Mr. President?
Yeah, council bacon.
Just as a point of information to the applicant, when you're coming into the committee, I noticed that you have filed your application with an "or" for the zone change. So when you come in, we are going to need to know which zone you want of the two. Okay? Thanks.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the necessary rules and proceed to public comment before we, um, look at the items laid on the table.
Our motion is to suspend the rules, take up public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Public comment, we have two signed up. Did anyone else want to sign up? No, all right. So the first one is Mary Burks from sixty-three Taylor Street in Hoyoke. Just make sure the mic's on.
Pardon?
Just tap the mic, make sure it's on. Perfect. Thank you.
Um, hi. I just wanted to make two comments tonight, both of them in connection with education. The first in connection with the, um, school department budget and the second in connection with, um, a recognition that we're trying to get for Mark Todd, who is the music teacher at Hoyoke High School. There seems to be, or at least there seemed to me to be, some confusion over how the school department budget is passed and who has authority to do what. As a former special education administrator, I know, um, it seems to me that going to the law helps to clarify that. And it's not that long a law. They just, when you download from the state, they, the font is large for people like me. So this has to do with supportive schools appropriations and recommendations. It says, "Every city and town shall annually provide an amount of money sufficient for the support of the public schools as required by this chapter. Provided, however, that no city or town shall be required to provide more money for the support of the public schools than is appropriated by vote of the legislative body of the city or town. In acting on appropriations for educational costs, the city or town appropriating body shall vote on the total amount of the appropriations requested and shall not allocate appropriations among accounts or place any restriction on such appropriations. The superintendent of schools in any city or town may address the local appropriating authority prior to any action on the school budget as recommended by the school committee, notwithstanding his place of residence." I probably could've skipped that line. "The city or town appropriating body may make non-binding monetary recommendations to increase or decrease certain items allocating such appropriations. The vote of the legislative body of a city or town shall establish the total appropriation for the support of the public schools, but may not limit the authority of the school committee to determine expenditures within the total appropriation." And I know there seems to be some confusion over who does what, so that's that. Second thing I wanted to say is that, um, Mark Todd, um, has been, oops, nominated, um, as a music teacher who inspires. It's a contest put on by the Box Center in Boston. And I've put a, some information on the Hello Hoyoke Community Forum in this regard. And if you just scroll down, it'll basically tell you to go to the, click on the Box Center website. And there you can like, share, or comment on, um, Mark's post. And the person who gets the most likes, shares, or comments wins. He wins, um, a thousand dollars, which if I know Mark Todd, will go to the Music Students Scholarship Fund, 'cause that's where he's put every donation I've ever seen him get. But also, he gets tickets for a group of people to go and see the Sound of Music at the Box Center. And I think he also gets a one-night stay in Boston and a visit to a spa, most deserved for this person. So, you know, if, as many people as listening tonight would go and vote for him, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last, um, public comment is Price Armstrong from fifty-seven Park Slope in Hoyoke.
All right, hello, yes. I'm Price Armstrong. I'm just gonna take a minute. You should've all received cards for the River Row and Stroll. So what I wanna do, I'm co-chair for the steering committee. I just wanna invite you guys to come down on May sixth from eleven a.m. to three p.m. This is a really special event. When I call it unique, I don't mean it in hyperbole. Literally Mastot has never allowed us to shut down a bridge before. So it's pretty unique, pretty special, and I'm really honored to be, uh, be a part of this, uh, planning this event. There'll be food trucks, musicians, face painters, um, uh, so many musicians, marching bands. And of course, we've already put in the paperwork for sixty-five degree weather and sun. So it's definitely, uh, there's no excuse to stay home. So please help us spread the word. Uh, I also wanna invite you to join our Meet in the Middle campaign. This is a new thing this year. Uh, we're inviting community leaders from both sides of the river to endorse the event and its spirit of unity, bringing together, uh, people through a social media campaign that we're calling hashtag Meet in the Middle, because everything has to have a hashtag these days. Uh, many of you are already on board, but for those of you who, uh, haven't been contacted about it, I just wanna extend the offer. We're posting folks' pictures on the event's website and are planning on also recognizing these community leaders day-of on the bridge. So there should be contact information at the bottom of these cards. Feel free to reach out if you're interested. And that's all. Hope to see you guys on the bridge, May sixth, eleven a.m. to three p.m. And this is the Route one sixteen bridge to South Hadley, for all you listening at home.
Thank you very much. All right, that ends public comment. Back to item one, items that were laid on the table. Item one is from Irma Cruz, Assistant City Clerk. Minutes of the regular meeting from March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion?
Motion to remove from the table.
Second.
Motion to remove from the table. Alls in favor? Alls opposed? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes is about to be corrected.
Without what?
Yes.
Second.
Motion is to approve. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Item two, order that the mayor, chief of staff, representatives of the UFCW fourteen fifty-nine Vampool and the chief financial officer of the school department attend the Department of Government Relations Committee to discuss a resolution, uh, to deny the current approved contract. That's also relates to three and four. Any action on those? Oh, one point of note, councilor Roman cannot make it tonight. He had a, an issue come up at work, so he sends his regrets and apologizes, but he will not be at attendance tonight. There's no action. We can move on to item five. Communications.
Yep.
So item five is from Paul Pear, uh, city solicitor. City council influence on contracts.
Motion to receive.
Motion is received. Do you wanna refer it to a committee? Do you wanna just receive?
Can you, can you read the highlights? Can you just read the highlights? I mean, I know we all got it, but I think just so that we can kind of dispose of it, it would help.
Says, uh, so April twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Dear councilors, on March ninth, two thousand and eighteen, the council referred to request the legal department for an opinion to determine whether the city council may influence the award of a contract. Absent specific charter or statutory provision requiring the city council authorization, the city council may not directly take part in the making of a contract. Then it goes on to chapter, uh, section fourteen. Neither city nor the council or a member of the committee shall directly or indirectly take part in employment of labor or making of contracts. By the terms of the city charter, the city council may not take action intended to directly or indirectly take part in making of contracts. A legislative order directing or binding executive power to contracts would be deemed invalid and unenforceable. And then they give some citations.
Can I make a motion to send to committee because our good colleague, who's not with us tonight, he says a work obligation. He had some questions regarding this, uh, he, he doesn't feel that this answered his specific question.
Okay, so the motion would be to receive and refer to...
Joint committee?
Joint.
Second.
Hmm, I don't think it, go ahead.
Counselor, make it...
If I could, um, I think this directly answers the questions that was posed and, and cites the charter. So why don't we put it in charter and rules? And I think it's, it's actually in relation to items three, four, and, two, three, and four, which is on the table. And I, I think, I asked part of the questions to the, to the law department, looking for a legal opinion. This is a, a legal opinion signed by the city solicitor that essentially says that the charter prohibits us from getting involved in contracts and, and getting involved with what is an executive function. And to be very careful about it, especially when a contract is being negotiated. And that's what I was fearful of two weeks ago and still concerned about, even though I, I think this is a unique situation with a, with a labor, uh, group that is working with an outside vendor, so to speak, with the schools, which we have no purview over. And, and I think the opinion answers our, or at least answers my concerns, and we have to stay out of it.
So make a motion to send a charter and rules.
Second.
All right, motion is to receive and send a charter and rules. Alls in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Six, uh, from city clerk. Minutes of the special meeting for March twentieth.
Make a motion to receive and adopt.
And April third. Motion is to receive and adopt the meeting, uh, minutes of the meeting for the special meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor McGivern?
This is, um, I believe the minutes from the clerk, but there is no narrative to any of the discussion in these meetings. So I'm not too sure what we're adopting. The clerk is just the keeper of the record. Without true minutes, there's nothing to adopt.
So make a motion to table them until narratives are there?
Before we table?
Counselor Bacon?
On one portion of one set of minutes, which I don't have in front of me right now, I think there was just a typo in a vote that was, I believe, eleven zero. And I think it says eleven nine or something odd.
That's been quietly taken care of on the prior number here.
Okay.
Was quiet.
All right, so we can make a motion to, to table. I know with regards to minutes and narratives and everything, sometimes, um, there are mistakes or typos. You can email those in to Ryan, as well as the clerk's office, to get them ready before this meeting. Uh, if you just happen to see it tonight, that's understandable. But you always can email them in and they can make the corrections right away. So with that, the motion is to table. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Number seven is from Marcos Barrero regarding the sale process of fifteen seventy-five North Hampton Street, which is the Lynch School.
DGR.
Motion to receive.
Motion is to receive, refer to DGNR. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight is a communication from councilor Roman, uh, to the, uh, Paul Pear, which is opinion on the contract.
Yeah.
Send the charter and rules along with the...
Yep, second.
Okay, so that's what you were pointing to, councilor.
Yes, sir, yep.
So he, he still had an outstanding question. So make a motion, receive, and refer to charter and rules. Alls in favor?
Aye.
And just, uh, Mr. President, for, for a point of reference, um, the opinion that solicitor Pear gave us was in response to the late filed order that I had filed on March ninth. And I believe that, um, councilor Roman has, uh, a different set of questions. But I just wanted to, for the record, state that I don't think that, um, there was a formal request, um, of those questions until this communication. So it's a two different set of questions. And what, um, our city solicitor was responding to was the late file order that formally asked him for opinion on, I mean, March ninth.
What we can do is, once they go to committee, we can have, uh, city solicitor or assistant come in to say, "Does the ruling also apply to councilor McGivern's question, which has some similarities to it?" So, councilor McGivern?
On, on the communication from the city councilor, all we have is what's on the agenda. I don't know what the questions are of the city councilor. And we know we don't act on communications. We receive them from informational purposes only. A city councilor files an order with specifics as to what changes he's asking or what, you know, specifics he's addressing. And right now, we're sending something to committee that I have no idea what it's about, other than the, the heading.
From councilor Roman?
Correct.
Uh, he said the, I do believe he sent an email to everybody when the opinion came out. It said, um, "City Solicitor Pear, your opinion did not address the question posed by the council. We have a non-binding resolution offering our opinion on the contract that has already been approved and signed by the receiver and on the mayor's desk. Our question was that if we recommend and implore the mayor not to sign, but not require it in a violation of the provisions that you listed, please advise, uh, on this front. Thank you sincerely, Councilor Roman."
I just point out that if I did receive that email, I would not open it in fear of violating the open meeting law. And the proper way of doing this would be to file an order with the specifics, so we all know in the open meeting.
Right, that's all we did, was receive a communication by the councilor and send it to committee. Uh, we are not acting or adopting anything. It's just a communication. But you are correct, that once again, we had the city solicitor in here. It is a tricky little process in the sense of open meeting law, in the sense of, we're all trying to do well in the sense of send out information to people. And we might reply to it saying, "Thank you," or something like that. In Paul's view, you've now stepped into an open meeting violation. So we just have to be careful, um, about the reply "alls" or sending, that type of stuff. When in doubt, I always send everything to Ryan or the clerk's office to then send to you guys, just so that way we're, we're trying to stay covered. But if you always have questions, Paul always said, "Call the legal department." He'd be more than happy to tell you if it's borderline. All right, with that, we're on to number nine. Petition filed by a resident of Hoyoke regarding traffic through Sunset Road, Ashry Road, and surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, it's one of six pages. And it looks like eighty-six...
Can we have a brief reading?
Uh, we, the undersigned petition, the Hoyoke City Council, to reconfigure the street to reduce traffic, uh, as a cut-through Sunset Road and the surrounding neighborhoods, including Ashley Road.
Okay, thank you.
And eighty-six signatures have been confirmed.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
So motion is to receive and...
Receive and refer to DPW. And if we can suspend rules so legal can weigh in, I'm just not sure of the procedure. And I let the people know that I would find that out. I believe DPW will hold a public hearing in this regard, but I'm not positive.
All right, so the motion is to suspend rules to allow the legal department to weigh in. Alls in favor? Alls opposed? Did they steal your microphone?
They did.
You want, you want Nelson's?
No, it's fine.
You sure?
It's fine.
Okay. There we go.
Um, I'm not sure on the process. I don't know if they're directly looking to just look for options. Is there a specific request they're asking for? I know this has come up before. They were looking to, like, dead-end a couple of streets, so I don't know if it needs to be more specific.
Right, but what I'm trying to figure out is what is the correct committee?
Normally with petitions, you have to have a hearing on it, so...
And it's, I don't believe it's an ordinance matter. So I'm thinking it's DPW that has to hold the public hearing. But I just wanna make sure that we're sending it to the right place. This has bounced back and forth between, um, the ward and public safety and trying to figure out what the procedure would be. So the thing we had determined was that a petition had to be filed to initiate anything. And then there was a little bit of gray area as to where it should properly go. And there's a, as you noted, a lot of people in the neighborhood that are interested. And there were sixty people at a meeting that wanna try something. And they had to do this so that a change can be made to the road.
I think, I know with the street renames, we've been doing DPW and Planning Department, but I can look, um, there's, there were specific instructions under one of the ordinances about the stopping of roads and adding roads. So I can look into that for you and, and find out.
Okay, so I know that piece of it's in public safety, and we haven't gotten back around to it yet. But in the meantime, the neighbors have taken action.
Do you, do you wanna receive it, refer to committee? And if it's not the right committee, we can always refer it out?
Yeah, the committee can change it. But I think the path seems to be to send it to DPW for a public hearing on the road reconfiguration. And so maybe...
Would they also make a motion to receive, send to DPW to hold a hearing, copy to...
Public Safety?
Okay.
Since the other matters there are ready for the neighborhood?
Okay. Motion to receive, send to DPW to hold the hearing, and, councilor, president?
Yeah, briefly, Mr. President, we, we had a, we had a, a meeting on this. I believe I sent out an email to everybody, 'cause I was trying to plan a meeting, unfortunately.
Yes.
You know...
But the, yeah, the neighbors just threw the chair. The neighbors just did this in the meantime.
No, right, but I, I, I believe it was at the law department's hands when we tabled it on December seventh or December seventeenth. I forgot exactly, but I know it was in December. Waiting for some sort of response. And I believe, Crystal, you were on that email today with respect to this, to this order?
That is correct.
Okay. Right, so, you know, we wanna move on. And Joe, I say, I appreciate you responding to me about, like, trying to get the chambers, because that has been a nightmare for my committee to actually get a date through, through, through the administrative assistant, because it's just, it's actually, I find out today that there's already a meeting, already scheduled, of which I knew nothing about. So again, I'm hoping after the mayor leaves from San Juan, and, you know, that following week, we can get you in there, or get us together anyway. So maybe the first week in May, I'd like to have that. And if the law department already is aware of that situation, maybe we could find it, you know, get, get an answer for the folks out that way.
Thank you.
All right, so motion is to send DPW for hearing and copy to Public Safety, correct? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Number ten is from the Board of Health. Minutes for March first, two thousand and eighteen. Motion to receive.
Motion to receive.
Motion is to receive. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions. Eleven is from no stranger, Yellow Cab Renewal of Six Taxi Cab License.
Make a motion to send to Finance.
Orders to send to Finance. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petition from Goodwill, item twelve, for renewal of a second-hand license at two three one.
Twelve, fifteen, and sixteen are all renewals. I'd say that we could take them up as a package, grant them all pending all municipal fees and taxes are paid.
Second.
Twelve, fifteen, and sixteen.
Say aye when you're voting.
I know.
Or you say aye when you're talking about yourself. I have to go to the bathroom.
All right, so twelve is for the Goodwill. Fifteen is for Ivory Billiards, nineteen pool tables, one billiards table. And sixteen is for the Turnverin, which is one pool table and six bowling alleys at six twenty-four South Bridge Street. All taxes are current, so motion is to receive and grant the renewals.
Aye.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Taking fourteen as a package under suspension of the rules.
Take up thirteen and fourteen as a package. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's a petition for a new special permit for outdoor sales lots for new and used motor vehicles at five thirty-two High Street. And petition for new special permit for motor vehicles, same spot.
Motion to receive and send to DGR.
Motion is received and for DGNR. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item seventeen is also a petition for a zone change. Oh, that was already done. So President's Report, we'll make it quick. First is a communication. Everyone should have received it, but just to say it again because it's right around the corner. This is from Comcast. Dear Honorable City Council, on Saturday, April twenty-first, we will host our seventeenth annual Comcast Cares Day. And this will be at eight AM to two PM at Jericho at five thirty-seven North Hampton Street. So if you have time, please stop by for this event. And that's signed by a stranger to the city council, Eileen Leahy. Just kidding.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you. It's on her behalf. She did send this back in March. So I'm not sure why. We just got an email on it this week. However, Comcast, obviously, is no stranger to the city of Hoyoke. Just last year, I think they donated five, five thousand dollars to the homework house, plus iPads and full backpacks as well. But what they're trying to do is just expand their impact in the city of Hoyoke and, and to help the fine people of Jericho. So I'm going to be there. I have to be there. But we encourage you guys to be there as well.
Also, I do believe Counsel Valentine, June tenth is the New York City trip, the bus trip.
Yep.
So June tenth, you can contact Counsel, or former Counsel Dostado Lopez. There'll be a bus ride to the parade in New York City, of which the city of Hoyoke's being recognized, or, so.
What's the price? Where do we meet?
That's Counsel Valentine.
Sure. So, so a couple of things, as, as I had mentioned at a previous meeting, the National Puerto Rican Parade, which is the one out of New York City, probably the biggest one in the United States, has, has decided to recognize both Hoyoke and Springfield at their parade this year, which is Sunday, June tenth. The way it works, it goes parade committee to parade committee. So basically, our contact in Hoyoke officially is the Ostado Lopez. And our contact in Springfield are the folks on that committee. And so the Ostado has made some reservations for some buses that are going to be leaving from the area of the train station, so Dwight and Main. And it's seventy-five dollars per person for those who choose to do it that way. It includes food, a T-shirt, and the transportation round trip. However, folks are welcome to arrive in New York however they see fit. And there is no limit on marchers. So what we're doing right now is basically putting out the word for groups in Hoyoke that we would love to see represented there that day. There is a planning meeting tomorrow in Springfield that the Springfield group is putting together so that businesses, individuals, and organizations that are interested in being part of the planning can have some conversation on this. So if you have, if you want details on that, let me know. But again, everyone is welcome to attend. It's just, you can either get there on your own. But if you want to go with the Hoyoke group that the Ostado is leading, you can go on, on these buses that are seventy-five dollars a person.
Thank you very much. As you know, Price was here. He talked about the May sixth, eleven to three PM River Rowan Stroll. Definitely recommend you get down there. It's a cool concept where they shut down an entire bridge connecting Hoyoke to South Hadley. And they have activities up and down the bridge. So May sixth, finally, I promised you guys, time and time again, I was going to have coffee ready for you. There is now a coffee machine in back. We're going to put it together. It's not tea. It's not hooked up yet. I have to have Ryan get ahold of some people at DPW to put the table and stuff. But we have a fridge, water, new coffee maker. So that way, the pot will be ready for you to get in here. We're just trying to make it warm and inviting to you. So that's in back. It's in a box, but good luck. Anyone else?
Can I make an announcement? Yeah, thank you. So I think most folks here know, but I just wanted to, to kind of give you a little update. I've been working with Mount Holyoke College since November, December of last year. They actually have been amazing. They gave me the honor and privilege of hand-delivering a invite to the mayor of San Juan, Carmen Jolene Cruz, who's been in the news quite a bit since September twentieth, when Hurricane Maria hit the island, as a spokesperson for the island, really, and as a fighter and a warrior. And so I've had the privilege of working with Mount Holyoke since about November, December, hand-delivered the letter inviting her to come and do a keynote address at Mount Holyoke. And they immediately said that they also wanted to make sure that she had the opportunity to spend time here in the community of Hoyoke with the number of, with the very high number of Puerto Ricans that we have in our community and the symbolism of that. So just to let you all know that she will be arriving next Wednesday, April twenty-fifth. She'll be at Gateway City Arts that night. It's standing room only. It fits five hundred people, four hundred ninety-nine, actually, based on the fire permits. And that will be free, open to the public. And it will be livestreamed. I've been working with Hoyoke Media. They've been phenomenal in making sure that that happens. And then that's going to be Wednesday. Thursday, she'll be at Mount Holyoke, doing a keynote there at their auditorium that fits a thousand one hundred people. And then Friday, she'll be doing a town hall at Mount Holyoke in a smaller room. And again, this is all kind of primarily for Mount Holyoke students. But if there's any of these events that you would like to attend, reach out to me and we can make that happen. But I do want to invite you all that Friday, April twenty-seventh, at two o'clock right here on the lawn of City Hall. We're going to give her a key to the city and invite her to say a few words. And that is, again, free and open to the public. So I hope that some of you can make it. We know it's work time, but that's how it worked. While she's here, in those three days, I'm going to be able to fortunately bring her to meet folks at Girls Inc., the Care Center. I'm doing a roundtable discussion with twenty-five student leaders from the local high schools at Westeriahurst. And also, we will be able to have her spend time with, I'm missing one group. Girls Inc., Care Center, oh, Hoyoke Community College. With some students at HCC. So, I know, right? That's all right. So again, if you, if you want more interest, more information and you're interested, please let me know. But I do hope that most of you can join us Friday, April twenty-seventh, two PM at the lawn of City Hall so we can welcome her to the city and thank her for her advocacy on behalf of Puerto Rico. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to announce it there? Counsel McGivern?
Just a quick announcement, Mr. President. It might be hard to believe, but the Hoyoke Mary Ground is celebrating this year its twenty-fifth anniversary in Heritage Park. I think most of us know the story of the Mary Ground being saved from Mountain Park when the owner was, closed it and was selling off the rides piece by piece. The twenty-fifth anniversary is a theme for our, every three years, the Hoyoke Mary Ground has a fundraiser up at the log cabin, a casual fundraiser. But this year's theme is Mountain Park Memories with a highlight of all the bands that played up there. I think Danny and Mike remember a couple of bands, The Animals, Paul Revere and the Raiders, a couple of the local bands that played there and the type of music that was, was part of the history of Mountain Park. And a special tribute to Larry Chesky will be part of the, of the program. I'm announcing it, Mr. President, because this three-year, every three-year event has in the past sold out very quickly. And it is very important to the Mary Ground to recognize their twenty-fifth anniversary.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
June fourteenth.
Log day.
You scalping tickets?
Buy one, get thirteen free. Just put in a call three. All right. Anyone else? No? All right, so reports and committees, there was no ordinance committee.
What?
We're close on a few things, but we're giving you a slight break.
Because DGR's doing all their work.
We share.
We share.
We share. Off to Finance, nineteen A.
President, if I could suspend the rules to do nineteen D first. Mr. Anderson is here.
Nineteen D, make a motion to suspend the rules, go out of order. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Committee on Finance referred an order that the city of Hoyoke appropriate the amount of thirteen million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars for the purpose of paying costs for boilers and windows at, it depends on the school. So it would be Kelly, Morgan, and Sullivan School. So it's windows, boilers, doors, everything, all three schools. Over to Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion to receive, passed the first reading.
Motion is to receive and pass first reading. Under discussion?
The Finance Committee had the pleasure of having Mr. Anderson and others with the, with the team that's, that's developing or contracting the engineering, the, the project itself. The MSBA program is a program for which the city would be eligible for up to eighty percent of whatever we spend. The proposal in front of us is a bond estimated to be twenty years. That bond will not be floated until the projects themselves, well, the treasurer will take the necessary steps to float the bond, but not until the projects themselves take place. As noted, this is Kelly, Morgan, Sullivan. Kelly, very important besides the windows, also needs a new boiler. Morgan and Sullivan needs new windows. The new windows, and I'm not going to do the best of describing the type of windows. I think Counsel Sullivan could probably do it better than I. But we were presented with what is the existing problem with a number of windows that have been not only damaged and trashed over the years, but with a proposal with a, with some, I won't say relatively new product, Mike, but product that would be much better for, for the, for the type of windows that would be there and not be susceptible to vandalism in the future. There are warranties on, on the stuff that is being, that stuff that is being used. And certainly, I think we all recognize Mr. Anderson as a person and his staff who cares and takes care of our school buildings as best as anybody could possibly do. The Finance Committee is recommending on a five to zero vote that this, that this approval would be granted tonight to allow the bonding to take place and the treasurer and the mayor to eventually sign off on that.
Anyone else? One thing is the effective reimbursement rate is seventy-seven percent based on these projects. Just to, don't want anyone yelling at us. Normally is eighty percent, but on this one, it's seventy-seven percent. Why they're taking three percent, we'll, we'll deal with it. But if there's no other discussion on the first reading, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call a row. If you're voting yes, you're voting for the bond, for the three schools and all the different projects. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Restnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBrol Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Ballinton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
What's your vote? Do you approve the bonding? Nineteen A, Joe, go back to the top, or?
If we could, yes.
Nineteen A, Committee on Finance. Who was referring, communication from Hoyoke Water Works regarding the Tri-City Carbon Project?
Make a motion to remove from the table, pass the first reading.
Motion is to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quite a discussion at the Finance Committee, meaning the, the director of, the engineer of the, of the Water Works, Dave Conti, the Water Commissioners, former Mayor Sullivan, not our mayor Sullivan, former Mayor Sullivan of, I'm sorry.
West Springfield.
West Springfield, thank you.
Ed Sullivan.
You know, we're before us with, with an explanation of what this is and what's kind of happening as we speak around the country. It's a unique project where, I think most of us know, we've taken a tour, are, are aware of the fifteen thousand-plus acres that is owned by the Water Works. Much of it is conservation land. Some of it is protected where it is closer to our, to our reservoirs. And a lot of it is also towards where our distribution systems start bringing the water into the city of Hoyoke. And the, the project and the reason the, we as a city council need to, to either give us, to give the okay or, or to vote it down is because it's an, one, it's an interminable agreement with West Springfield, Westfield, and, and the city of Hoyoke. And two, it's a multi-year agreement, which I believe by ordinance, Mr. President, we, after three years, we have to, to approve contracts if they go longer than three years. The, the conversation took place. A lot of information was exchanged. And essentially, it's, what, what we, what the Water Works would do is, and the example they kept using was, was Disney World, but I'm sure there's a lot more examples out there. But developers need land. And when they need land, they sometimes are taking land with a lot of, of the footprint, the carbon footprint, which would be a lot of forest area, a lot of brush, a lot of trees, and a lot of vegetation, so to speak. And, and they are, that, that is detrimental to, to the carbon footprint itself and detrimental to, to the environment. So what happens is they can buy or preserve the rights of what they are taking away by buying a credit from landowners such as the Water Works and with the Water Works' commitment that they will maintain and preserve the land that they are, they, the developer somewhere in a different part of the country is paying for. It, it's, it sounds, at first, I, it took me a while to sink in, to be quite frank with you. And Dave's been talking to me for, for a couple of months to get this in front of us. But it was an incredible presentation. A thousand questions were asked. We even asked them to ask us if there was any downfall. And, and everyone said it's a win-win for the city of Hoyoke, a win-win for the Water Department, and more important, or probably equally important, a win for the, for the environment somewhere, somewhere in the country. So the committee does recommend that we adopt the interminable agreement and allow the Water, Water Works to enter into this agreement with Westfield and, and the good town of West Springfield.
Anyone else? Counsel Sullivan?
I think we should also give a real big thank you to this former mayor of West Springfield, Ed Sullivan. No relation to myself. But his town, it's divided up between Westfield, Hoyoke, and West Springfield. West Springfield receives the smallest share of these funds. Hoyoke receives the lion's share. And if it wasn't for his efforts, he spearheaded and really drove this entire effort. And he should be thanked for that.
Yep, just so everyone knows, ten-year commitment with Hoyoke's net revenue would be one million, two hundred and, one million, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, roughly. Westfield, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, and West Springfield, three hundred and seven thousand. So Hoyoke is receiving the largest portion. Counsel Tolman?
Yeah, just, it was an interesting meeting. I really learned something about the carbon footprint and that whole process. And stated by the Commissioners and actually the, Mr. Conti, the manager, that it's really saving the, the water users from their tax, their water rate going up, which is something that we got to think about because, of course, people are using less water now because of the sewer rate's so high that they're trying to, you know, conserve a little bit. So this is a good thing for, for the, for the water users in the city of Hoyoke. And, and that's quite a department. The, the Water Department is really a tightly-run ship. And, and Mr. Conti's really done a great job with, with what he's. really done a great job with what he's has with his commissioners and the workers down there. I just want to thank him for that.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, when I saw this, I wasn't too, I wasn't exactly sure how I was going to vote on this, just for the fact that there's three different cities and towns, and I wasn't exactly sure how the money was going to be split out, if there's anybody making commission on this, I was very skeptical. However, what I did do was I reached out to Par Barrett and Mark Nadorf, and these guys are unbelievable. They're unlike any other commissioner, they actually look at this as a full-time job. And these guys put their efforts in, they put the hard work in, and it's only topped by Dave Conti, who is the superintendent. This person knows, seems like he knows everything about everything. And the way that Mayor Ed Sullivan explained it, and also echoed by Dave Conti and the commissioners as well, made me feel comfortable in voting for this. And this is something that we are certainly going to get a benefit from, the largest, the lion's share benefits, so this is a good thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? The motion was to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Correct, Counsel McGivern?
I made that motion, that would be, I believe it's just to adopt.
Did they need a roll call, though? Because we're signing off on a contract.
We do need a roll call, we do have to, yes.
So the motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you're voting yes, you're voting for the contract. If not, you vote against it.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the 10-year commitment. Item 19B?
We did it.
B?
No.
As envoys?
Motion to remove from the table for the purpose of passing the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met with Mike McManus from the DPW and had a discussion on the request here. Essentially, I think most of us know that we are currently looking for both an engineer and, for the first time in a long time, I think since Craig Dolan, our DPW director is an engineer. And the position, what we're doing here, what Mike is proposing to do here, what the mayor's already signed off, is to move $28,000 from the senior civil engineer into the senior city engineer assistant superintendents. His intention is to fill that position, to bring the staff back to full levels. This was recommended on a five-to-zero vote to allow the transfer to happen.
Anyone else? Motion is received, adopt, pass the first reading, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. You're voting yes, you're voting for the transfer of $28,000 to the assistant superintendent.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Item 19C, from Committee on Finance, was referred, the amount of $513.19 be authorized from the legal department, recording fees, appropriation for fiscal year 2018, for services rendered for fiscal year 2017, which were unencumbered in the fiscal year end.
Make a motion to take off the table to pass the first reading.
Motion is received and pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met with our state's listener, Attorney Pear, he explained that this was a, it is a, we're voting on it, both a prior year bill, and something that should have taken place in the fiscal year last year, but the recordings did not take place until the fiscal year went by, and the monies were not encumbered, so we have to approve both using this year's monies for a bill that was due last year. Committee recommends five to nothing to give the approval and the appropriation.
Anyone else? Motion is received, adopt, pass first reading, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the $513.19 for prior year bill.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 19D is done, no pun intended. 19E, Committee on Finance was referred, an order that they hereby appropriated $4,841.52 from patrolmen to injured on duty and $500 from stipend.
Make a motion to take off the table for the purpose of passing the first reading.
Second.
Motion is to receive, pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's two parts to the proposal. The first part is something that we've been talking about and doing on the floor. We did not do this one two weeks ago because the patrolman to injured on duty had a second part to this order, which was the stipend of $500, and no one could answer what that stipend was about two weeks ago. The stipend, the stipend according to the police department, is, the chief came in, is a stipend that is in the contract, where in the records division of the police department, if there is no supervising officer assigned during a given shift, a patrol officer, a non-supervising officer, takes over the supervising role and gets a stipend of $500. Not $500 for one shift. The $500, I lost some of my notes, but I believe the $500 is to cover the rest of the six months of this year, and the total amount, I think, for the entire year is averaging around 1,000 if used. Both contractual and both noted, the questions were answered, the committee on a four-to-one vote voted to recommend that this request be honored and adopted.
Motion was to receive, adopt, pass first reading, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading, clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
10 years.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 19F, Committee on Finance was referred, an order that they hereby appropriated $1,235,126 from charter school assessment to school expenses and unemployment. School expenses, $900,000, unemployment, $335,126.
Make a motion to remove from the table for the purpose of passing the first reading.
Motion is received, pass first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Committee met with Anthony Soto from the school department, the chief financial officer of the school department, and had a discussion on this. This is like round two of a discussion, which we started last year, on the impact of charter dollars on our school budget. We heard from, on public comment tonight, Mary behind us, you know, talk about, you know, some of the things that are our relations in terms to the school department budget. And there are also some things that are very unique in these years because of the receivership, and I believe this is partly one of them. But what we're looking at here is, and I said this for the last two meetings, is we did not meet net school spending despite the plan that we had. And the only reason we didn't meet net school spending was because of a number switch in the charter school students themselves. So what is proposed here is, one, is to take the assessment, which we didn't get fully funded for, and we can try and figure that one out, but to take the charter school assessment and to pass it into the school budget to allow them to use it on school expenses, and to take part of the charter school expense and put it into a line item that is known as unemployment. Now, the unemployment line item has traditionally been on the city side of the budget, even though 90% of the unemployment costs are school-related positions, as is the case this year. And the charter school is never a line item that is found in our budget, and that was what we were researching last year, and we found out the charter school, the only time we actually see that dollar estimate at the beginning of the year is when we're presented with the cherry sheet, as we're looking at the proposed budget, and the cherry sheet being the budget and proposed revenues along with proposed expenses. So the idea here is to meet our net school spending. The schools are running a bit of a deficit, and they're starting to look at a deficit for next year. Unfortunately, because of the receivership, the school committee is stripped of just about all of its powers. And we have developed a relationship with the schools to work on these type items. I'll give credit to the receiver and to Anthony, especially to Anthony Soto, for being very transparent about this. I'm sorry if I'm saying anything wrong.
Joe, that's... I think the time clock is...
Need a new trash bill, Joe. Sorry about that.
Uh-oh. That's a first, Mr. President. Mr. Soto...
Counsel Valentin's breaking the task, I'm breaking trash, Bill.
Mr. Soto, I think has been very transparent, along with Dr. Zric in the past few years in terms of the budget processes itself. I think most of us have been very transparent, as much as we appreciate their work, we don't want a receiver, we want to get back to business as usual. But in the meantime, until that happens, we do play a role, and the role tonight would be, and our most important role tonight, is that we do have to meet net school spending and keep up that tradition.
By the way, that was an empty Styrofoam cup, just pointing that out there. That's all I have to say.
Is that from the new coffee maker?
I think so.
I don't think I'm going to have any of that coffee.
That's leaded.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Counsel McGivern, sorry about that. If not, the motion was to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 19G, Committee on Finance was referred, in order that they hereby be appropriated a transfer of $3,994.94 from firefighters to injured on duty.
Motion to receive, remove from the table, to pass the first reading.
Motion is received, adopt, and pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We agreed, and I know Counsel Bacon had questions about a month ago, when we were talking about this, all these multiple transfers that we've been seeing this year. I think we now recognize that, one, these multiple transfers from salary to injured on duty in both of our public safety departments. What we're doing is, we're seeing something that was always routine, routinely handled by the department head and the mayor as inter-department transfers in the same category. We changed the rules there, and we said we want to see them, and we are seeing them. But what is happening is, what we're seeing is something that will continue to happen every pay period when there are injured-on-duty firefighters or police officers. It's merely an accounting purpose for purposes of tracking, of taking the salary from the salary line item and putting it to injured on duty, noting that they're getting paid what their salary is, even during the time appropriately, while they're injured on duty. But this allows us to track money and to make sure that we understand that what we're spending may not be getting the same service out in the streets as we think we are, unless we know how much injured-on-duty monies has been accounted for. We held off on this one because the fire department had not come in. The chief came in, we had a good conversation with them. Similar to the police department, the fire department takes the steps of, any firefighter who files for injured on duty has to, on the next business day, be either seen at the emergency, if not seen in the emergency room, seen at the, I'm going to say it again. More connection. More connection. Nothing to do with the wellness center, but you know, one of these days I'll get it straight. And this also, the chief told us that he's been tracking the injured on duty, and for the most part, he's happy with it. He can't talk about individuals, but he did answer a couple of questions to other city councilors, and the committee recommends we pass this five to nothing. And I hope in the future, unless they sneak in a stipend, that we adopt these on the floor.
Anyone else? Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading, clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 19H, Committee on, who was referred, hereby appropriate $3,012.64 from Patriotic Events to payhead clerk.
Make a motion to receive, the committee report, remove from the table, to pass the first reading.
Second.
Is to receive, adopt, pass first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
The committee met with one of our younger department heads, one of our newer department heads, Jesus, and gave us the breakdown on this. Some good news, the reason there's some extra money in Patriotic Events is, our legion has kicked in as, in a donation in terms of some of these events to offset some of the cost, and he's requesting this to go into this. He had a deficit running in this particular payhead clerk line item for something to do with the beginning of the year and the contract, but he just needs this to finish out the rest of the year. The committee recommends five to nothing to approve the transfer.
Yes, Joe's correct, he states, the budget did not take into consideration the alary rate increase for the position, and additionally, it failed to correctly calculate the annual salary for this position. That was the reason why for the request. And one little point about Jesus Pereira, do you know he runs Vet Air? Anyone ever hear of that? Vet Air, he started up, I know we're sidetracking here, but it's early, it's never been this early. He actually flies planes, and he will take a vet, instead of driving five, six hours to go from here to Boston, New York, throws him in a plane, flies in there, gets him there quicker to get treated. He actually flies planes and he will take a vet instead of driving five, six hours to go from here to Boston, New York, throws him in a plane, flies in there, gets him there quicker to get treated. No cost. This kid is amazing. So, it's amazing that we have him here as one of our head employees, but at the same time, just what he does on the side to help veterans is amazing. So, with that, motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you're voting for it, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
One hundred percent yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Oh, look at that. He threw it in there. Nineteen I, the Committee on Finance referred in order that the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ten cents be authorized for the Board of Health advertising for unencumbered in 2017.
Big motion to receive, the committee report taken off the table to pass the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. I talked to Mr. Manajak prior to the meeting and related to the finance committee that this was at the, two things happened at the end of the fiscal year. Typically, this is, this transfer is to cover some bills for interstate travel that, you know, would normally have been paid through the mayor's budget, which is one line item, which is traditionally what we've been doing in recent years. The mayor's budget ran out of money at the end of the year and no one put in any request to fill the line item at that time, and therefore, these bills could not be encumbered and they were carried over into the next fiscal year. So, again, we're approving the transfer, or no, we're approving this year's monies to pay last year's bills. Brian assured me that they, well, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ten cents, I think Mr. Manajak can certainly be trusted for that amount, but what, you know, he did assure me that they were legit expenses.
Anyone else? So, motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer for an unencumbered expense in 2017.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Public Safety, Public Service, DGNR, Charter and Rules and Joint Committee, there are no reports, so we'll move on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Before we do that, Mr. President, can I just have, I guess I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Tonight Barbara Bush had passed away. She met George Bush back when she, when he was at Phillips Andover Prep School in Massachusetts. And later she went to Smith College and six months later after that, they got married. And she was obviously the wife of George Bush, forty-three, mother of George Bush, forty-three, I'm sorry, forty-one and forty-three, and also a wonderful lady. So, at this time, I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence.
You want for a moment of silence? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to motions, orders, and resolutions. Twenty-five from Counsel Valentin, that the handicap sign be placed at 195 Suffolk Street.
Ordnance with a copy to the Commission on Disabilities, please.
Motion is to receive, refer to ordinance with a copy. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-six, from Counsel Valentin, that the assessor come in and explain their assessment process and how they determine the values and growth of residential, commercial, and personal property.
Finance, please.
Motion is to receive and refer to Finance. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Twenty-seven, that the City Council invite the police chief and appropriate mental health care professionals to inform us of best practices for dealing with the overdose in the field. Twenty-eight, the mayor coordinate with the HG&E and the Police Department to provide training to all municipal employees regarding identity and dealing with cyber threats. And twenty-nine, from H to HG&E alongside HPD to develop protocols for identifying and reporting cyber threats and how to avoid them. Receive and send to Public Service, please.
Motion is to receive and send to Public Service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item thirty from Counsel Lisi, that the City Council add as a permanent agenda item reports of ad hoc committees.
This would require a rule change, but I'd like to receive and adopt on the floor. It seems pretty straightforward.
Mr. President, I agree it's straightforward, but our rules say we can't adopt anything in the first reading.
Right, we have to send it to committee, don't we? So, make a motion to receive and refer to Charter and Rules. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one from me, that the department, the Hoyok Water Department Commissioners and Representatives come before the ordinance committee to discuss payment in lieu of taxes program. Make a motion to receive and refer to ordinance.
Second.
All's in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Thirty-one. Sorry, that was thirty-one. Thirty-two, that the order come before the ordinance to address all payment in lieu of taxes. Once again, that would go to ordinance as well.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For those who might be asking why, when the water commissioners came in, they wanted to address something on the payment in lieu of taxes, but it's not on the agenda for the committee, so we had to file it and then take it up accordingly. Thirty-three, from Counsel McGee and Counsel Lebron Martinez, that the City Council invite in David Porter in order to present and discuss the HARP project. Send to DGNR?
DGNR.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thirty-four, from Counsel McGee, that the DPW Forestry Department moved the dead tree near the driveway of fourteen fifty North Hampton Street.
Receive, adopt, and refer to the forester.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and send to DPW and the Forestry Department. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-five, Counsel McGee, that the DPW and Marcus Merritt come before the Public Safety Committee to address the permitting and safety matters associated with the art located at the corner of Lincoln and North Hampton Street. Make a motion to send to Public Safety.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And thirty-six, from Counsel McGee, that the city of Hoyok studying to address the possibility of shifting its employees and retirees to the GIC health insurance.
Should I be added into that?
Me too. Could I too?
That's adding Counsel Bresnahan, Leahy, Tomlin.
Lisi.
Make a motion to send to Finance.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Big motion to suspend rules to take up thirty-seven and forty.
Motion to suspend rules to take up thirty-seven and forty as a package. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to refer to Committee on Finance.
Second.
Motion is to send those to Finance. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nice job.
Big motion to suspend rules to take up thirty-eight and thirty-nine as a package?
Second.
Second.
Motion to suspend rules to take up thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Just quickly, I do apologize. Thirty-seven was from Pay Plumbing Inspector, four thousand two, inspections plumbing, four thousand forty was the pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement grant. So, it's on the record. Thirty-eight and thirty-nine, Joe, you said?
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine, please.
Make a motion to receive. Actually, suspend rules to take up as a package. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion is to receive and pass the first reading.
I think we're in agreement. First one is firefighters injured on duty, the six thousand twenty-three dollars, six cents to salary to injured on duty line item. And the second one is police officers, same thing, injured on duty from the salary, eight thousand two nine two, two twenty-two cents to injured on duty. Accounting purposes, the explanations are the same. If there's no new questions, I suggest we just pass these on the floor.
Anyone on discussion?
Can we just know how many are out injured in each department?
For police, it's one, two, three, four. For fire? Three.
Thanks.
So, motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you're voting yes, you're voting for both transfers for injured on duty.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Late files. Late file A from Counsel McGivern. Boo. Oh, sorry. Inner thoughts, inner thoughts.
I have a new...
Just kidding. This is not really from Joe. It's just a transfer from Register of Voters, one thousand five hundred, to Assistant City Clerk, one thousand five hundred, to Finance.
If I, no, actually, if I can make a, I think we can do this tonight, but if I could, at my request, ask that we suspend the rules to take up final action this evening?
Motion is to suspend the rules. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? And we're gonna take up final action on this.
The motion would be to receive, pass the first reading, and I'll try to explain it the best.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
I did receive a communication from the department head and this, what this is, is I think he recognized the line item, the one thousand five hundred from the Register of Voters. I received a talk from the city clerk. The one thousand five hundred from Register of Voters would be from Susan Mead's line item who has retired, so there's an excess in that account. And we're transferring it into the Assistant City Clerk's line item, who is appropriately acting out of grade for our city clerk herself. And this would just, to pay the difference during that period of time while Brenna is still on maternity leave. So, my suggestion is if possible, to pass it.
Make a motion to pass it tonight.
Second.
So, the motion is to suspend the rule, oh, area, suspend the rule. So, the motion would be to pass the first reading. I will abstain, as I always do, just to put it on the record, only given it for informational purposes.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the first reading first. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll.
Is there a question, Mr. President?
It's to move, oh, you have a question? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, could you clarify that, Counsel McGivern, please? So, I understand the concept, but if the clerk is not here, is she still paid her full stipend regardless? Or how does that work? So, the clerk receives a stipend for her duties here in City Council, but seeing how she's on maternity leave, does she still receive her stipend for that work?
Yes. She's on maternity leave, which is equivalent, or as we all know, you know, governed by law, but she does receive her full salary while on maternity leave and it's the line item that we're transferring this into is not the clerk's, but into the Assistant City Clerk's, who is acting as the city clerk in Brenna's absence.
Okay, so, if, just to clarify, so, I understand she gets her full salary because that's a creature of law. I understand that. But the additional payment that she receives is a separate budget line item, if I remember, Joe. So, she's not here, is she still paid that full budget line item though she's not here from the, for her duties? I just, that's the question I'm asking. And I'm asking that because if she is paying it, then, if she is paid that amount, then I guess, I understand. I guess I'd wanna know why. But if she's not paid that amount, why wouldn't we transfer it from that line item into the Assistant City Clerk? I mean, if these are questions you know, then fine. If not, I would just assume get the answer.
Well, no, that's a fair question, and I think that's been asked in the past and...
I just don't know the answer, Joe. I'm really just, I'm not, I'm not being a wise guy. Just, I really just don't know.
No, I think it's a good question. I personally, you know, don't feel a position such as a city clerk is an hourly position. It's a salary position. And even though we do recognize the duties that are performed by the city clerk, which is not just sitting in this room while we're in meetings, it's actually the real work of the city clerk takes place and is paid for what their responsibilities are. And that's the minutes that we receive, the recordings of the votes, the keeping of the records, the keeping of the archives and so forth. But again, I think Counsel Bartley has a good question, but my personal feeling is a salary is a salary and you don't reduce an individual's salary because they're out on maternity leave.
For informational purposes only, this came about, an ordinance was created, I do believe, when Suzanne, Susan Egan was out sick, of which Suzanne Mead was subbing in. New ordinance was passed that if the clerk is out for a certain amount of time, we then have to pay the assistant who's acting what they call out of grade. So, that's what this is for.
Okay, so, Mr. President, I wanna pay the assistant. I'm not, there's no question about that. I'm just asking the question about the clerk's additional, whatever it is, I think it's four thousand dollars, but I can't remember what the budget says. So, clerk is paid her regular salary, which is whatever it is, then there's an additional budget item for her work here in City Council. So, I'm just asking a question whether or not, if she's paid that, does it matter of course? Or does she actually, does the full-time clerk actually have to come to the City Council meetings to earn, to be paid that amount? So, I guess that's, I mean, so I don't dispute that the Assistant City Clerk should be paid. I don't dispute that this is a, this transfer makes sense. I just wanna get that question answered before I vote on this. And I'd rather have that, and if we want, unless there's a pressing need, if there's a pressing need that we, that she doesn't have the money to pay Irma, then I'll certainly vote for it tonight. But if there's not a pressing need, I'd rather have the question answered.
Counsel Bacon?
Just relying on my memory, for as good as that may be, when Susan Egan was here, a question came up about that very topic. And I believe at that time, it was between the clerk and the person sitting in for her, relative to the stipend, not the salary. And that the stipend went to the clerk and that the clerk distributed it however she saw fit. That's my recollection, but that's the best I can tell you.
So, could we, Joe, is it, may I, Mr. President?
Sure.
Joe, is this, do we need to do this tonight in order for she to get paid or, I mean, if we don't, can we table it for two weeks and just get, I don't want to send it to committee, Joe. I just get it answered.
No, I understand. I believe if we put it in committee and discuss the question, that's fine. But I believe the pay would be rectative to the point where Irma, you know, crossed over into the time period, Irma crossed over into the additional salary because of the ordinance that the president cited. But I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't see why it wouldn't be rectoactive.
Counsel Leahy?
Me?
Yep.
Oh, good. So, all interesting and good questions, good dialogue. I'm just thinking in memory for the last, you know, maybe two or three months, that I know that Brenna, our city clerk, who just recently had a baby, is still working at home and she's still doing the lion's share of the City Council stuff. So, I'm not sure if we could, maybe we should talk about this later, but I know that she's I don't know those laws, so I want to stay clear from that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council McGivern, your motion, or Council Bartley, do you have a motion?
I'll, if, either way, Mr. President, I could, I could table it here, and just so I can get the answer to the question resolved. Or we could send, if the Finance Chair, Joe, is going to have a committee meeting between now and our next meeting, then let's send it. Is that what you're, what's your intent, Joe? Is it, you're going to have another-
We, yeah, no, we have two meetings scheduled.
Between now and the next full city council?
Where's that calendar when you need it? Ryan, when's the next meeting?
Back there.
May first is the next full city council.
Ryan? When's the Finance Committee scheduled? Anybody else have a meeting on the twenty-ninth?
No.
All right, we have two Mondays that are scheduled, so if we, we'll take it up at the next meeting.
Twenty-ninth is Sunday.
Yeah, Monday, the thirtieth is D G R.
All right, so it's after, it would be after the first. Our next meeting isn't until the following Monday.
So, Council Lebron Martinez?
Can I, can we maybe amend the motion that at least the administrative gets paid until the other stuff gets settled, or?
No, it's, the order is as, as you can't amend financial transfers. So-
I'm going to make a motion, we send to Finance.
Motion is to send to Finance. No second, fails for lack of a second. Original motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes, Irma.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Ballington?
Yes.
Tenyes.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Late file B from Council McGivern. The city hereby accept the American Legion Patriotic Event Grant.
Motion to receive, refer to committee of Finance.
Motion to send and refer to Finance. All's in favor?
Aye.
C. From Council McGivern. Order hereby transfer from registry of voters one thousand to temp seasonal one thousand.
Motion to receive, refer to committee of Finance.
Motion to refer to Finance. All's in favor?
Aye.
Late file D from Council Sullivan. Order that Article One, Section forty-two dash fifteen, licensed manufacturer, store, use, and sale matronial products, explosive materials, and inflammable materials be reviewed. Many of these license fees are outdated and out of line with allowed volumes. Motion would be to-
Ordinance.
Receive and refer to ordinance. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Late file E from Council Sullivan. That Article One, Section forty-two dash eighteen, permit fees on the fire protection code be reviewed. The section deals with permit fees, and all are substantially less than surrounding communities. Motion more- Send to ordinance. All's in favor?
All opposed?
Late file F from Council Sullivan, that Article Two, Section forty-two dash forty-one, compensation be changed to allow for stipend for fire commissioners. Motion would be receive and refer to-
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules. All's in favor? All's opposed?
Aye.
G. From Council Sullivan, order that the legal department answer the following question. A, do union contracts supersede city ordinances? And B, can the city ordinance be negated through collective bargaining? Motion be receive and refer to legal department?
Correct.
So receive, adopt, refer to legal department, copy to a certain department or committee to get an answer, or just a full council?
Well, I beg of full council.
Okay, so motion is receive, adopt, refer to legal. Actually, we can't even, just can't take final action, we have to suspend the rules. Motion would be to suspend the rules, take up final action on late file G.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion would be receive, adopt, send to the legal department for a legal opinion on your questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Council Lisi, I'm sorry.
Just under, since we suspended the rules for final action, if Council Sullivan wouldn't mind elucidating a bit what the order is attempting to look at?
Council Sullivan?
Can you just explain, what is it going after? What is it in reference to? It seems, it seems a little vague to me, and so I was just wondering if you could say something more about it.
Well, I don't know what's vague about it.
Is there a specific issue that it's trying to reference?
Well, there's, there's several issues. You know, we've got city, city contracts, right? That, and we have city ordinances. And how we can have a city ordinance that says you will reside in this city, right? And then have a contract that says you don't have to reside in the city? That's a problem to me. I hope it's a problem to everyone. What's, what's the second piece?
A, do union contracts supersede city ordinances? B, do, or can a city ordinance be negated through collective bargaining?
Yeah, so, and they're both tied together. I answered, I think I answered the first question. The second one is, so can, can the mayor or even the legal department negotiate something that's a city? Is that a negotiable bargaining chip? Seems pretty straightforward, and it seems as this has been going on, because we have things happening that are against city ordinances.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Council President?
Why don't we do the motion? I just have a simple comment. I have a comment if we want to just go through this.
Are you just going to comment first, and then we'll do it?
Well, I mean, again, I ask my colleagues to refer to the, to the rules. I mean, and I say this with respect in my heart, is that, you know, late filed, late filed orders are emergencies. I mean, you know, this, this doesn't give any of us the, the actual advantage to reading the order, the public getting access to that order. What we do is have a bunch of orders that are filed in. We have until Friday, the Friday, three days, four days before the meeting at twelve o'clock to get an agenda, the city clerks. I haven't heard one order that has, that is an absolute emergency. And I know it's early, and I'll stay here all night, I'm not saying that, but when you file these late filed orders, you're avoiding the public getting it on an agenda. They get it on an agenda two weeks later, and I don't think that's fair. It's not fair to me, and I don't say this to anyone that's filed the late filed order, but Rule forty-four, in case of a late filed order resolution or other foreign business hereafter order, the maker shall indicate on the order that it should be considered as a late filed order. Upon reading the order, present an explanation of the need to consider the order on the night, rather than waiting to consider it as a regular agenda item. I mean, let's, 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 let's have the, let's be, let's have transparency. It's a key word here. We're on item nine for late filed, none of which is about a grant that has to be approved tomorrow so we can get the money the next day. Or a transfer that's required because the money's running out. Late filed orders have a purpose, I get that. But I mean, just filing late filed orders because you thought of a great idea on Sunday night, I don't think that's the purpose of a late filed order. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? So the motion is to receive, adopt, send to legal for response back.
I could, Mr. President.
Council McGivern?
On the, on the legal question, this has been an age-old question, and I think it'd be interesting to see how our newer law department weighs in on it, because it's a double-edged sword, no matter how you look at it. You know, there's, we, we as a city council can't create an ordinance that would negate or negotiate or interfere with contract negotiations. But at the same time, we create ordinances and control certain things like the amount of, of police officers, firefighters, and so forth. But the budget eventually, you know, takes precedent over the ordinance and over the contract itself, and we do have the final say on the appropriation. But there's a lot of gray areas in this, in this type of request here, and I think it would be interesting to find out how this legal department interprets it when we're passing ordinances and when the mayor is negotiating contracts. And Council President's comments, I don't agree with you, Dan, wholeheartedly, but starting now, the chairman of the Finance Committee will not allow any late filed orders to be put under my name unless I sign it. And I will not sign it unless I hear from the department head, as I did from the city clerk before the meeting this evening, unless I hear from the auditor, the mayor, and the, and the department head why it's late filed. And I've said this, and no offense to the former chairman of the Finance Committees, and Todd, this goes back before you. This goes, this goes, this goes back to Chick Kennedy, that this was done. And there is no reason, there are going to be emergencies from time to time for financial appropriations. But, and I know last week was an early agenda, but I'm sorry. There's no reasons these things, and I agree with Danny, had to be filed late. They could have been filed on time for the agenda, and we could have, well, and not just the public, but all of us could have seen it ahead of schedule. So I'm going to email everyone and let them know, but, Mr. President, do not, and to the city clerk, there will be no late filed financial orders unless I sign off first.
You're here.
Amen.
So you didn't sign off on those fifteen you filed?
Did you hear those first words? I agreed with you. You know, can you at least take that and accept it?
So, under the current motion, which was to receive, adopt, send to legal, all those in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Late file H. From Council McGivern. Order that they hereby appropriate twenty thousand dollars from the tree climber to contracted services of twenty thousand dollars. Which tree?
Committee of Finance, please.
I thought we weren't accepting these, Joe. Motion is to send to Finance.
After this evening.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And Joe, I agree with, that former chair of Finance was just shocked when they came across that night. All right, aye. Looks like a communication, appointment of a new personnel administrator, Hector Karas. I'm going to butcher that name, so I'm going to try. Thank you, you guys are the best. So I'm going to send this to-
Public Service.
Public Service.
Appointment of the-
Appointment of the Personnel Administrator, a new one. Yeah.
We have a meeting Monday night, so you can come in.
Monday night. To Public Service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? J is the late file communication from Comcast, which I told you about in the president's report. Motion is just to receive? Actually, we can't even receive it. Just refer to-
Suspend the rules, receive and accept.
Motion to suspend the rules to receive and accept. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So be it. I told you about it, I was ahead of the game. All right, this is-
C.
It is March tenth.
Okay.
A.
Late file from Council Bartley. Order that communications from city legal department regarding Hoyok receivership program, suspend rules to take final action, refer to D G and R.
Yeah, that's my motion. I just received about an hour ago, two hours ago, so I, we want to take up a committee April thirtieth. I, you know, so I was like, do a late file, Todd.
All right, so the motion is to suspend the rules, take up, you want to take up final action?